We'll call the meeting to order for Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2023-16 for August 15, 2023. Those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
My Father, my Father, how we be thy name. The kingdom come, and it will be done on earth as it should be. He gave us this land, not bread, and he gave us this trust. As messes, as we give those who trust against us, and lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. Find the King, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
To the Father, and the United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I obtain a motion from the council to approve the consent agenda.
To move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion is carried. Consent agenda has been approved. Good morning, Mrs. Hurley. Harry.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on the agenda this morning is a public hearing on Resolution Number 102-2023. This is amending the fiscal year 24 budget position control document Exhibit F and the paying classification plan to regrade the position entitled Hazard Materials Coordinator. A public hearing notice was posted on the county's website and published in the local newspaper, and Mr. Lorenzo Cropper, Director of Emergency Services, and Pam Olend, Director of Finance, are here to answer any questions.
This time we open the floor for public hearing in reference to Resolution 102-2023. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this resolution, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Okay. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution Number 102-2023. I obtain a motion from the council to approve Resolution 102-2023.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All right. Discussion. Ms. Olend, Mr. Cropper? Good morning.
Good morning, Pam Olend, Finance Director.
Lorenzo Cropper, Director of Emergency Services.
We came before you, I believe, in a work session a month ago requesting the retitle, regrade of a position within emergency services to allow for a hazard material coordinator position. There is sufficient funds within their budget due to salary savings to be able to accomplish this for this fiscal year, so we are requesting this change to happen with this resolution.
Does anyone have questions?
What will be the impact after this year?
It would be the difference between the current $37,000 and the amount we hire somebody at. Right now, we're putting the person, we're putting it in the budget at the 61, the midpoint, which is, has been our history, and so the question becomes is what do we bring somebody in at? It would be the difference between the $37,000 and what we hire the person at.
It's the high end.
The high end, we would have to come back to you anyway, because, again, we put them in at the midpoint.
Okay, so there's nobody in the position?
No, there's nobody in the position. There's nobody identified currently. They would start advertising for the position and try to hire, and depending on qualifications, again, our policy has been to vacant positions that don't have a specific person in it. This one is really...
It don't get so close.
Sorry, I don't typically have a problem with it. Sorry, it just bothers me to hear it go in and out. I apologize. So because we don't have anybody in it, we typically budget the positions at midpoint to allow us flexibility in hiring. Again, if it's higher than midpoint, we then have to come to council to ask for a budget amendment.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Jeff?
How long have the positions been vacant that we're using the funding for?
I believe it was May.
Approximately May. I don't have the exact date.
So if we take the money that removes the possibility of filling that position in the future?
No. Oh, okay, so the position that we're regrading went vacant in May. The other positions that are currently vacant are ones that have been vacant since July 1st. Those are monies that we're using to cover the shortfall. And again, until this position is filled, it's a vacant position, and we're not utilizing any funds. So it's one of those, it's a combination of all current vacant positions, and so we have in the budget $37,000. We're looking for the spread between 37 and higher, again, without the position being currently filled. We would have the savings from, since it's not a July 1st higher date, we would have the savings from July 1st through that for this position as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution Number 102-2023, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion is carried. Resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 103-2023. This is authorizing WHO Manufacturing Company as a sole source vendor to provide OEM, which I believe stands for Original Equipment Manufacturing Parts, for the WHO Tub Grinder, to be utilized by the Wycomico County Solid Waste Department during fiscal year 2024. You'll notice that the resolution and the next two resolutions have an SM after the resolution number. This means supermajority, which means that five council members must vote in favor of the resolution in order for it to pass. There are also updated sole source documentation forms on the council table for you that have been authorized and signed by the Director of Administration.
Thank you, Ms. Olend. I obtain a motion from council to approve Resolution 103-2023.
To move.
Second. Discussion.
I would like to, on these resolutions, the next, this one and the next two, the person that's not been approved, Heather Langford, has been, her name is on there. I'd like to make a motion to add an Item 4 to the resolution to say sole source justification and disclosure statement is attached to Exhibit A and to strike Heather Langford's name as acting deputy director from the sole source documentation. The reason for that is she's not been approved, and putting her name on documentation like this could create a liability issue.
Am I suggesting removing the name as well as the reference to the title of the position as well? Okay, Mrs. Hurley, this does not require, this is not necessarily an amendment, it's because this is simply an attachment. Is that correct?
I think he is wanting to actually add the attachment as an exhibit, so his motion is to add as an exhibit and to strike the name.
As redacted.
And title.
Okay, there's a motion. There's a second.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
The motion passes six to one. Okay. And now, just for my clarification, as we continue through each of these, Mrs. Hurley, we do not have to make a motion to approve the resolution as amended because that is simply an attachment that will go with the resolution?
No, you are actually amending the resolution, so...
An amendment? A resolution as amended.
As amended, correct. And I would suggest that you would do that for each one of the resolutions that are on the agenda.
Are you asking for Mr. Holloway to do a motion for each one?
Yes.
Or is this current, okay, all right.
Make the motion to amend.
Sit tight, you've got a couple more to do. Okay. Any further discussion as far as the justification of the sole source vending? I know that we have Amy Kernodle here from purchasing.
Question. Did Councilman Webb say aye?
He said nay.
Yeah, that's...
We had six aye.
I thought he said aye.
Aye to nay.
He said nay. We have six to one. Okay.
Yes.
You did say aye, but you're changing it.
No, 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 no. When he said nay, I meant to say nay, but I said aye with the nay. It's kind of, just kind of confusing.
Thanks. Six to one.
Record was clear.
You got it right.
They don't serve coffee here in case anyone...
I wish we did. Are you, do you have another question?
No, I'm good.
I was gonna ask one thing.
Amy, would you like to come forward?
Well, it was gonna be for Laura, actually.
Okay.
I was gonna ask for the supermajority. Why is it a supermajority?
The charter requires that five council members have to vote in favor of it, dictated in the charter.
Okay, I was just, I was just clarifying.
Sure.
Just for added clarity, we do have within the documents that we have in front of us and that we've received, Mr. Bonkey Lufman, Director of Administration, has signed and gone forward to that to be clear that we're not...
In place of?
Yeah, in place of.
Thank you. Yeah, we appreciate that help, that assistance from Mr. Lufman. Any questions from Mrs. Kernodle? Okay. All those in favor of Resolution 103-2023 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion is carried. Resolution passes.
Okay, next, for your consideration, is Resolution Number 104-2023, authorizing Vermier Mid-Atlantic LLC as a sole source vendor to provide OEM parts for the Wildcat Trummel and HG 8000 TX grinder to be utilized by the Wycomico County Solid Waste Department during fiscal year 2024.
I obtain a motion from council to approve Resolution 104-2023.
To move.
Second. Motion is second. Discussion.
Again, I'd like to amend this to add Number 4 to the resolution to say sole source justification and disclosure statement is attached to Exhibit A and to strike Heather Langford's name as acting deputy director from the sole source documentation.
And the title.
Yes.
And the title.
And the title.
That's a motion. There's a second.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post.
No.
Chair votes aye. The amendment passes six to one. Continue on any discussion. Is it, am I pronouncing, is it Kernodle? Is that correct?
Yes.
Just want to make sure. Do you have anything you wanted to add about, in reference to this? Because we recognize it's really important, and you put, you bring it forward simply because it's a matter of saving a lot of time and administrative work in trying to go and get bids. Is that correct?
Yes, well, for each one of these resolutions, they are dealer provided OEM parts. So just like with a Ford or a Chevy, you want to get dealer parts. So it's the same scenario for each of the three.
Okay, all right. Just thought we'd have you clarify that. Any further discussion on the Resolution 104-2023? All those in favor of Resolution 104-2023 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion is carried unanimously. Resolution 104-2023 passes.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 105-2023, authorizing Carter Machinery Company, Inc. as a sole source vendor to provide parts and maintenance for CAT equipment to be utilized by the Wycomico County Solid Waste Department during fiscal year 2024.
I obtain a motion from council to approve Resolution 105-2023.
To move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Again, I'd like to amend, motion to add Number 4 to this resolution, and sole source justification disclosure statement is attached as Exhibit A and to strike Heather Langford's name as acting deputy director from the sole source documentation.
And the title position?
The title position.
Motion is there, second.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post.
No.
Motion is carried. Amendment passes six to one. Any further discussion on the resolution? All those in favor of Resolution 105-2023 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion is carried. Resolution passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item for business is Resolution Number 106-2023. This is authorizing the county executive to accept grant awards from the Federal Aviation Administration through the Airport Improvement Program and bipartisan infrastructure law for the construction phase of the runway extension project, and we have Pam Olend here, Director of Finance.
I obtain a motion from council to approve Resolution 106-2023.
To move.
Second.
Motion is second. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. So we're requesting without a specific dollar amount yet for the one grant, the ability for the executive to sign these grants, the FAA is coming to the end of their fiscal year, and they will present us a total dollar amount of these grants and say, here, you need to sign these, in about 24-hour timeframe. Because these will be going towards a capital project, we will come back to council in the month of September to amend the capital budget with the exact dollar amount, so council will know the exact dollar amount that we have received. The one grant that we don't yet know the dollar amount is pretty much in anticipation of a grant that we thought we were going to get in fiscal '25. They are planning, or in '24, they're now planning to give us a little bit early in what is their fiscal '23. And so the advantage to getting this is it will be able to make the parts associated with the project, we'll be able to make, do a bigger section of the project when we bid it out. We have all the matching funding between all the other grants that we have, as well as the borrowing that we have done for the runway extension and the borrowing that we are planning to do. So the request is to allow the executive, when we get that final dollar amount, sign those grant agreements. We will come back to council to amend the capital budget with the exact dollar amounts.
Questions? So in the statement from Mr. Rudy in one of his letters to Mr. Lufman, made the note that this does not increase our overall discretionary funding for this project. Does that mean that the 5% match has already been taken into consideration?
No, what it means is that advanced grant. We were, we would get, we get discretionary funding from the federal government every year. It's typically a set dollar amount. What they're looking to do is giving us some of next year's, in what would have been next year's discretionary funding, in this year for their budget. So we will get it in advance. So it would mean that next year's discretionary funding number would be smaller, but again, because we did not expect to get that amount in the grant, we are coming to council asking for approval to have those grants signed.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 106-2023, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion is carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Olend.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 107-2023, amending the fiscal year 2024 budget position control document Exhibit F to make an increase in the appropriation of funds to planning, zoning, and community development for the nuisance code enforcement officer position.
I obtain a motion from council to approve Resolution 107-2023.
To move.
Second.
Second. We have a second. Any discussion? I know that Mrs. Carter is here.
So...
Come on, jump right in. Good.
So as Mrs. Carter's documents read is, we're looking to increase the salary of a specific employee to be able to retain this employee. They have the sufficient qualifications for this increase, and we're asking council to utilize savings that they have right now. Again, like other things, when we have these savings in the next fiscal year, this, the impact of this would be felt next year, which is $4,700.
Okay. Any questions from council?
We're good to go with this, clearly. You have, you don't see us having any, you don't see us going broke next year.
No.
Okay, well, I'm good then.
All those in favor of Resolution 107-2023, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion is carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Resolution Number 108-2023. This is amending the fiscal year 24 budget requests from the department's position changes document Exhibit E for the police specialist chief supervisor position.
I obtain a motion from council to approve Resolution 108-2023.
To move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
So this is a similar situation with the sheriff's office. They have a specific position that they are looking to try to retain the employee. They believe this increase is justified to retain the employee as well as allow them, the person meets the qualifications for this salary amount. They have sufficient funding due to vacancy, as I stated with the other two. This would be an impact for next year, but the impact is minimal.
Major, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Or do you want to come and say this? Want or will?
Yes, about two years ago, we created a second-in-command position, which that person took charge because we knew that the supervisor was leaning towards retirement. Sarah Bay did 38 years with the county, and Matt's been following her for quite a while, learning the gist of everything. But when he came in on the Bolton Study, they put him in at the beginning instead of at the midpoint, and we're just trying to get him to the midpoint. He's been working with us. He's taken over the division. If you're quite honest, we'd be lost without him.
Thank you, Major. Any other questions? All those, Josh, you have a question?
Not to say it's a very minimal addition amount, so I'm happy to support.
All those in favor of Resolution 108-2023, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion is carried. Resolution passes unanimously. Thank you, Major.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you. Next, for your consideration, is Resolution Number 109-2023, amending the fiscal year 24 budget position control document Exhibit F to reflect the full 6% increase for the Liquor Control Board Chief Alcohol License Inspector position. And Pam Olend's here.
I obtain a motion from council to approve Resolution 109-2023. Second?
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion.
So in creating, in processing all of the raises, it was determined that this one did not get adjusted on the position control document to the full 6%. Again, it is a manual process to do that. We tried to check everything, and one got missed. So we are coming before council asking so that we can give this raise because he only got the raise that is currently in the position control document. It will go back to the pay period that they were implemented.
Questions? All those in favor of, all those in favor of Resolution 109-2023, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion is carried. Resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next item for business is Resolution Number 100-2023, amending the fiscal year 24 budget and appropriation bill for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024, to reflect increases to the state pension plan for election employees and increase to the insured workers' insurance for workers' compensation mandated by the state of Maryland.
I obtain a motion from council to approve Resolution 110-2023.
To move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
So again, in, you know, once we implement a budget, you start looking at things, and elections review their budget, and during the budget process, it got brought to finance's attention that the state is passing on some additional costs for the elections departments to the local election, to the counties. It got missed being put into the budget. So these are state-required amounts that they're going to bill us for, and we are required to pay them, and kind of like the employees are state employees, they, and the state is now kind of passing along the full costs associated with those employees.
Okay. Any questions?
What's the, how do I increase?
So the increase is $99,998 is what they're saying that they are going to bill us. Those are new costs to us that we have never had to absorb as a county before.
Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 110-2023, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion is carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Olend.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 111-2023. This is to approve a memorandum of understanding between Wycomico County, Maryland, and the Wycomico County Health Department for opioid settlement funds.
I obtain a motion from council to approve Resolution 111-2023.
To move.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Lemonati, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. So they are, we're sort of getting to, to see some finality here, I guess. Is that correct?
That's correct. So beginning in late 2021, early 2022, council began to accept the settlements. Those funds began to be transferred. There's a separate financial account where those funds have been held. Now we have to begin to address how to spend those funds. The way those funds can be spent is extremely limited to opioid abatement, and going through the process, the health department from the beginning of the epidemic through today continues to address Wycomico's outreach to those affected by opioid abuse. So what the memorandum proposes and was written in conjunction with Mr. McConaughey and Ms. Olend is that the funds will go to the health department. The health department will then spend the funds in two different manners. 70% shall be spent to the benefit of the entire county. Then the remaining 30%, 30% will be available to non-litigating municipal subdivisions. Basically, that's every subdivision except Salisbury because the same way that Wycomico County is getting direct funds, Salisbury is getting direct funds. So Salisbury may benefit from the general 70%, but there's going to be 30% reserved specifically for the Pittsfield, Sharp Towns, Mardellas, not to leave anyone out. Any other municipality that didn't litigate can apply directly for that 30% to receive a benefit that will be felt immediately within their community. That could be something that would benefit EMS in responding for an overdose. It could be an after-school program. It could be whatever the municipality, they know best what they need, they will apply to the department, and the requirement is that they just need to spend it before they apply for more money the next fiscal year. So it will run outside of this fiscal year, July 1st to June 30th of every year. Beginning July 1st, there will be a six-week open period where the municipalities will be able to apply for the opioid abatement program. Then it will be, they'll be reviewed, then based on how much money's there, and it should be the same amount of money for a substantial period of time, where probably this year is the first year where all the settlements to date have been paid in, and that will continue until the next payment and the next defendant settles the case. And from there, the municipalities will be awarded their abatement program simultaneously while this is going on. The county's still spending the other 70% for the benefit of everyone. And then each year, the health department will write a report and deliver to council so that the council can see how the funds were spent. And all, the only exception is for this year, because there's already a substantial amount of money. If we have to wait until next fiscal year, next July 1st, as well as the rollover allows us to begin spending the money as soon as possible.
Joe?
I guess, I guess the big question is, how much money is it? I think that's everybody, everybody's ask, thinking that.
Right now, I think it's about $200,000 in the account, and we get an annual amount, and so I think that's two years, so we're getting about $100,000 a year right now. There are still litigants and amounts that could come to us to add to that. Right now, the Supreme Court has rejected one of the settlements associated with, and that happened this week or last week. So there is still movement. The money that we have, we have. The advantage to having this memorandum of understanding is, is as we get the funds, you know, we'll collect them each year and then give them over to the health department. They're the subject matter experts. They know what the county needs, and they also then will handle all the reporting requirements and take that off of the finance department.
So we don't know how many years this is going to go on?
It's about, each settlement's about 18 years. So some started a few years ago, so probably for the next 20 to 22 years, this will go on. The memorandum of understanding has a termination where if year four, year five, council feels like this isn't working, by December 31 of that fiscal year, council can terminate the MOU and then take over and come up with a new way to allocate the money. It may turn out 70% to the general counties too much, may need more to the municipalities, but this was sort of a breakdown to go forward. This is what the health department has seen throughout the state and thought was a good starting point, and can always be amended.
The health department's not here, but I think, you know, when you start, so you're talking 200,000, and 30% of that you say will go, or is it just 200,000 of Wycomico County?
So 70% of the 200,000 will go and do Wycomico County. The 30%, so there is a rollover position in this, is if we don't get enough applications, that money comes back into the 70% pot. Additionally, what we have asked is for the municipalities that do apply for it, figure Additionally, what we have asked is for the municipalities that do apply for it, figure out what they're going to use and utilize it before June 30th of the year. Because what we're asking for is, is if we, if we award you this money, you spend it. You don't just sit on it. So, that come the next year, you can apply for it again. If you still have funds left in an origin, in a previous grant from the health department associated with this in the thirty percent pot, they can't apply again until they have spent down the funds that they have. Because what we're trying to do is ensure that the funds are being utilized because that is one of the requirements of the settlement is to show that the money is getting spent.
So, a lot of these smaller municipalities, they don't have programs. So, I guess, in a way, you would think that they could divert these funds, like, from what you said earlier, to the local fire departments or EMS.
They could look at, again, it would have to make, they'd have to put the application in, make sure it meets the requirements. Yes, they could give it to, if it meets the requirements, they could give it to the local fire departments. And again, what we're looking for them to do is to spend it within a year's timeframe so that they can come back, you know, do they want to start a program for, you know, does Fruitland want to start a program that they host in their park? Do they want to do something like Wacomiko Goes Purple and, you know, opioid prevention and utilize that kind of funding? So, those are the types of things that, again, I'm talking as an accountant, and that's why we feel that it's best to have the health department dealing with this information because they're the ones who are the subject matter experts.
All right, thank you.
I have a question. How do we get to know what they've spent, the money went to already? We need to know that, or is this the first year you get?
This will be the first year. So, that's, so the money right now is just sitting in a bank account, a segregated bank account under the county's name in our investment funds. And so, there has been no spend, no spending yet.
And would the, how would they find out, for example, playgrounds? I know that Pittsfield wants, the library wants to add on, put a new library in Pittsfield? Is that correct?
Parsonsburg.
Parsonsburg, Parsonsburg, I'm sorry. Parsonsburg, those kind of things with it?
It has to meet opioid prevention and treatment. And so, unless they're planning to host a program at, again, there are very specific requirements. The health department knows those requirements a whole lot better than we do. And so, when they put these advertisements out, they will be able to direct people, answer questions for what kinds of things are these funds are available for.
Okay.
Are you all going to promote it to the municipalities?
Yes. The intention is, is if this gets signed and passed and is that, then we would open and we would advertise that thirty percent. And in it, we have a committee that is the ones who will be looking at the programs. None of those committee members can actually utilize the funds themselves, so there's no conflict of interest associated with it. So, again, it makes sense to have the health department involved in this since they're the ones who know how to operate it.
Any questions? In favor of Resolution 111-2023, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes unanimously.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. President, for medical reasons, Mr. Mitchell is not able to join us today. So, with your permission, I'll read the bill summaries that are on the agenda.
Thanks.
Okay. So, next you have the introduction of legislative bill number 2023-12, which is an act to amend Chapter 174 of the Wacomiko County Code titled nuisances. Article 1, titled nuisances, abandoned vehicles and firearms. Section 143, titled violations and penalties. Section 174-4, title survivability. And Article 2, title graffiti, section 174-13, title violations and penalties. And we do have Mr. Tony Williams here, who is our code enforcement officer, if you have any questions. And council did have a work session on this bill on August the 1st.
If you'd have heard, entertaining motion from council to introduce legislative bill number 2023-12?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion, any questions? All those in favor of introducing legislative bill number 2023-12, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, the introduction passes unanimously.
Next is the introduction of bill number 2023-13. This is an act to amend Chapter 141 of the Wacomiko County Code titled fees. Section 141-3, title department planning, zoning and community development. And again, council had a work session on this bill on August the 1st.
So, I entertain the motion from council to introduce legislative bill number 2023-13?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried, introduction of legislative bill number 2023-13 passes unanimously.
So, council can have the public hearing on both of those bills on September the 5th at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you very much.
And that is all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Williams. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concern.
Hi, my name's Dave Cooper, Wacomiko County resident. I stand before today a very frustrated citizen. Frustrated because, in my opinion, the majority of this council is acting like fools. You are foolish because you all aren't listening to your voters. You're only listening to yourselves and your own personal agendas. You have said the executive can't have an attorney for the charter disagreement, so why does the council need one? Do you realize how stupid and shady that really sounds?
Mr. Cooper, if you could, if you would mind, like to ask and maintain some decorum, if you don't mind.
I'm sorry, are you trying to censor my freedom of speech?
No, I'm just asking that you try to maintain decorum. I think it can be said however you may choose. I'm just asking you to try to respect the decorum. Thank you.
Okay, I'll try.
Okay, thank you.
So, actually, so where do I leave off? We did reset the timer for that, right? Because he took some of my time?
Wait a minute, Mr. Cooper. Three minutes is fine.
Wait, so that's where I said, you know, that's where I realized, I'll remove the word stupid, I was just asking you, do you realize how shady that sounds? Wait, probably not. Instead, some of your own arrogances has you angry at me for calling you out instead of you actually trying to better the situation. Let's talk about some other things that don't make sense. A member of this council openly admitted to not completely reading and understanding a budget, but yet still voted on it and voted to approve it. You should have actually abstained from voting. It is foolish to vote for something that you are not fully educated and versed on. Another member here makes very few comments, if any. Whenever this member is engaged in social media conversations, he requests that you call him personally or openly threatens to sue you if you, if he doesn't like your tone. Only wanting to talk in closed meetings in private usually leads to shady business practices or shady demeanors. It's almost like you don't want your comments on record. Several members were critical of an applicant for only having a law enforcement background, noting that it isn't enough of a qualification. Remember, one of you only has that law enforcement background, but you still feel qualified to do this job, don't you? So, why shouldn't he? Mr. Cannon and Mr. Holloway, these last couple of comments are strictly for you two. Mr. Cannon, you've been on this council for thirteen years. Mr. Holloway, you've been working on seventeen years. First off, thank you for your service, I think. So, when I say these following statements pertain exclusively to you, it's because for more than a decade, there has been an issue between this council and the executive office. You two are the last and only common denominators in that equation. I think that says a lot about the real problem in this county. Multiple times in both of your tenures, I have questioned your decisions and motives behind them, to the point where I look at your campaign promises and would say you have both fallen quite short. From causing turmoil with all executives in your tenure, removing over $15 million from our schools and still not replacing that from 2011, costing the county millions in other litigations and discrepancies with past executives, you are the reason this county needs an executive to keep the council in check. You have made it clear through your actions that you do not appreciate the threat to your power. We in 2006, in this county, told you we no longer trusted only the council to run this county, and you have, and voted to have an executive to run this county. So, please, let our executive do her job and let her lead. So, Mr. Cannon, at this time, due to all of the flagrant actions, I'm personally asking for you to step down as council president. I would also greatly appreciate resignation from you from this council altogether. You are the captain of this sinking ship. I feel your leadership is no longer needed, sir. This county needs new direction before you cause this county millions with yet even more, more battles with the executive.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Good morning. Holly Ortell, Wacomiko County resident. James Nguyen, I'd like to thank you for doing what you said you would do for the county. You have stuck by your word, and I'm grateful for that, and I'm sure the people are also who put you in office. Don't ever let these good old boys change you. Shane, you have become a huge disappointment for many, many, many of us who voted for you. You were 100% walking right by Madam County Executive, supporting her, door knocking with her, and at most of her campaign rallies. You have turned into one of the quote-unquote "good old boys," almost like a puppet for them. It's like you don't even have a word. It's like they've just reeled you in. I'm very disappointed. You won't have my support again, and I'm sorry for that. Joe, I remember the first time I meted you was at a Fourth of July party in Pittsfield. You introduced yourself to me, and you said you're a county, that you're one of the county council members for our district. You are, you are straight up, you straight up remind me of people that I would run from, good old boys. It's your way or the highway. You don't want to work with anybody. It's like you have your own agenda with, with the, with John Cannon. It's absolutely disgusting. Joe, you need to go. You, and I'm sorry I have to say it, you need to go. John Cannon, I want your resignation as county president. You are like on a power trip to me, to others who have voted for you, to put you in office. You obviously can't work with Madam County Executive. You have gotten your buddies who sit up here with you to go against anything and everything that the county executive is trying to do. Why? Because your friend lost to Julie? She's, if she fails doing her job, it's yours, 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 yours and yours fault because you're not giving her what she needs. We voted, this county voted to put her in office. You, Shane, stood right beside her. What's changed? Are you on a power trip? Think about it. You have violated the county charter, Mr. Cannon, and you even went against what the county, your county attorney told you. John, you have worn out your welcome as county president. Either you stepped down from this position, or have you heard of the no-confidence vote? Yes, the no-confidence vote, there is a no-confidence vote, and we can get that to happen. The county put all of you in office to all work together, and nobody does. Nobody has a voice up here that, you all have your own agenda. I appreciate Mr. Nguyen for standing his ground. I wish the rest of you would. It's time for a change, you all. All of you are very poor examples of council members who have their own agenda and don't listen to we, the people, who want to work with Julie, who put her in office. Shame on every single one of you for sitting up here. There will be change at the next election.
Thank you, Ms. Ortell. I hear the public comments. Mr. Speaker?
I'm just going to speak briefly. I'm Mary Hubner, and I don't have prepared notes, but I have to disagree with the previous two speakers. I've been coming to county council just for a few months, and I've been bowled over by how hard you all work, all the amount of work you do for us. I just, and I'm coming on behalf of the Democratic Club to take notes, but I can't thank you, each of you enough for all that you do for Wacomiko County. It's darned impressive. And I did write to Ms. Giordano and Mr. Nguyen prior to the election, and asked them both to, if elected, not accept because I didn't feel they were qualified. Ms. Giordano wrote back that it was the will of the county, of the people. And I did mention to her that she's hurting her supporters by doing what she's doing in this particular instance. So, I just want to thank you all. I think you all are doing a tremendous job, and I know we don't agree on a lot of things, probably, but for the county, I think you're doing a great job, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hubner.
Thank you. My name's Philip Joe White, Wacomiko County resident. I actually had no intention of speaking tonight or today, and I'd like to echo some of the comments the last speaker just had, and note that she stayed and the others spoke and left. If you really want to know what people want to know, then you should stay. I was at the last county council meeting, and it was, that was a tough meeting. What was really disconcerting was the decorum in here overall, not, not from necessarily the county council, but from the executive, who I actually still support, because I wanted to do a good job, because I'm not moving. I want to applaud Mr. Nguyen for continuing to fight what he, for what he believes in. And if we're going to recognize him for fighting for what he believes in, how could we not fight for what the other six of you believe in? Mr. Baker, congratulate you for having your own thoughts and feelings. You are welcome to change your mind, and as a taxpayer, we need you to. So, if the executive is someone you support, and nine months later, you feel like she's making the wrong move, I think you need to continue to speak out against that, the same as if Mr. Cannon was as well. Mr. Holloway, thank you for continuing to, to ask the tough questions, the unpopular questions. But there's really one thing I want to highlight that I noticed from last Tuesday, and it was Ms. Shields' comment. And I think that it really maybe should have even been followed more often, but she invoked the golden rule. We were not treating each other as we want to be treated. And it was uncomfortable as a taxpayer, but the six of you were, kept, kept your cool. Whether I agree with you or not, the way you presented yourself was the right way. Again, Mr. Nguyen, I think that you, you should stick up for what you believe in, and I support you. I'm going to do the same for myself. The, the last comment I will make is that not every taxpayer, not every resident feels the way the vocal, the vocal crowd was here last Tuesday. So, I encourage you to stick to what you believe in and follow through with what you started. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Jim Atkins, Wacomiko County. I just want to take a couple of minutes here to talk about something that you're going to be addressing here shortly with Chief Twilley and the tax exemption for volunteer firefighters. I understand that this is in its infancy, and there's a lot of work and study that needs to be done to it. I am 1,000% behind it. There's a lot of information that needs to be put out there, a lot of conversation that needs to be had. If you go to the state of Maryland's website on LoSAP for volunteer firefighters, it shows you what every county in the state does for their volunteers on LoSAP. Wacomiko unfortunately is not in the top portion of the LoSAP that it does for its firefighters. I don't want this tax exemption bill to be a mirror of LoSAP. There are things that need to be looked at. A couple of things that have popped into my mind that need to be looked at is, this is based a lot on LoSAP. is based a lot on LoSAP if you're an active volunteer fireman. I'm going to get personal for a minute. I think I'm one of the few, maybe not, I don't know how many there are in the county, but I don't think there's very many of us. I am 100% disability volunteer fireman from the fire scene. When I became 100% disabled and am no longer to be an active volunteer fireman, I lost my LoSAP because I can't make the necessary requirements for it. This tax exemption basically does the same thing. It's an example of what have you done for me lately? Not what did you do for me? What have you done for me? I'd like the people who are at the committee that's working on this, Chief Twilley and others, there needs to be some consideration for 25, 30, 40, 50-year-old volunteers who retire and get out of the fire service. The way this, if it mirrors LoSAP is, you'll be cut off. We're going to give you a property tax exemption while you're willing to get up in the middle of the night and respond to a fire. But after 50 years, if you're no longer able to, or after 50 years, you're entitled not to get up in the middle of the night and go fight a fire, we're not going to give you anything. Thanks for what you did, but you're on your own now. So all I'm asking is, like I say, I realize that this is in its infancy, and there's a lot of talk that needs to be done about it. But I just wanted to put a couple bugs in your ear about there are a few things out there that, that need to be looked at. We need to reward some of the volunteer firefighters who are no longer able to go out there and do that job for you, but were willing to and aren't able to anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Any other public comments?
Hi, my name is Maria Cook. I live here in Wycomico County. I'm a school teacher. I have supported pretty much all of you, and, and although I don't know you very well, I do know you're a good person. I think you're my father-in-law, Bob Cook, and yeah. So I, I know you're all good people. And I would, I just want to see you all working together. I want to see you working with our county executive, Julie Giordano. She's a good person. She has great ideas, and I just want to see you guys working together. I mean, I voted, I mean, I supported really all of you. James, thank you so much. The last meeting, although I wasn't here, I did watch it. And because of your speaking out, I think there was some transparency, and we got to see what you all thought about the reasons that you chose not to confirm the people that she had put out there. I don't necessarily agree with your decision, but James, if it wasn't for you kind of speaking out and, and bringing the topic up, I don't think anyone else would have said what they were thinking. And we need to understand what's happening. But more importantly, I think that you all need to be working with our county executive and help her. If she doesn't, if she doesn't do, if she doesn't fill out a form correctly, or she doesn't do something in the right, you know, at the right place, you guys need to help. I mean, you guys are supposed to work together. And I think you're only going to be successful if you all work together. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Any other comments?